Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Norwood Planning Board, September 23rd, 2019 at 7:00. We are in Room 24 of the Town Hall. We've moved up a floor. We're getting into the high-rent district now. It's 7:00. I'll entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from 9:919.
Mr. Chairman, accept the minutes as presented here this evening, second?
Anything else on the minutes? Seeing none, put a new vote, all in favor? Aye, opposed, unanimous. Minutes pass. We're about two minutes away from a continued public hearing on the Central Business District, the sign. So we've got about two minutes. We were going to, I can jump to the planning board business and I'll just throw this out to the board. We were going to vote tonight on the associate planning board member. We can still do that, or my thought would be we could wait until Mrs. Holwood is back and we have a five-member board so everybody can vote on that, if that's...
Sounds good to me.
So we delay that vote until...
That sounds fair.
The next meeting, which is...
You need a motion on that, sir?
I don't think so. It's not a, I think it's just...
Not agenda, okay.
Does that agree with everyone? We'll wait for a deputy to come back and vote on that? Okay. Now, it's 7:05. We have a continued public hearing, special permit application for internally illuminated signage in the Central Business District, 95 to 105 Central Street. John Minahan from Daddy's Dairy. How we doing, folks? Nice to see you again. When we last talked, we were just talking about the possible change to the way the sign over the front door was lit. And Patrick, do you have anything on this?
Yes, so the, um, yes, some new application, um, to see. So the signs pose two half-deep by 12-foot primary wall sign. This is Daddy's Dairy Ice Cream. It will be a two-frame sign cabinet with bright white aluminum face, high-performance pink stripe, and one-inch-thick foam fabricated letters. Sign will be externally illuminated by a 12-foot-long LED light fixture mounted above the sign and facing downward on the cabinet box. Signs 30 square feet, compliance with ZB6.2.67.2.
Okay, thanks. I think my only question is on the light bar. Is, are you the...
I'm the sign guy.
Oh, you're the sign guy. I mean, the light will be kind of a nice light. You're not going to see the bulb or anything, right?
No, it's a fixture like this. You're going to see, it's actually a very low-profile fixture, so you'll just see basically from the street, you'll see the aluminum side finish on it.
But you don't see the, you don't see a 12-foot...
No, it's not going to be... You're not going to see all kinds of crazy bulbs or anything like that.
Why don't we pass that around, Joe?
We have these other copies there.
Well, we can just pass this around.
Yeah.
They've got the new ones.
And it meets the criteria, Patrick, for the sign by law and everything?
Yeah, in terms of location and square footage.
And we talked about there were no signs on the awnings?
No.
What about, this one drops an awning? You're going to drop the awnings?
We're going to take that, yeah, that was an error, I think, when they drew the picture up. We're not having that blue, that blue one is not going to be there.
So just your windows won't have them, okay.
Yeah.
What is the material?
So it's an O-40 gauge aluminum, and it's going to have an aluminum frame. It's an aluminum tube frame behind. Everything's aluminum. Nothing will rot or rust ever. Even the screws would either be aluminum rivets or stainless steel screws, so...
I apologize. I should just say what a lettuce made out.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, I opened myself up for that.
No worries, no worries. I like to talk anyway. It's composite plastic.
Okay.
So these are typically one-inch thick. This one happens to be rounded. Theirs would not be. It would be more of a square letter, but at about 11 and 1/2 inches, and it's about one inch in depth.
I said it, I read that it said it's going to be studded here, too?
Correct.
How's it...
So this actually happens to have pads and studs, so this is maybe for a different mount, but typically that aluminum stud is what penetrates the sign face. So we drill those holes in that pattern, and then we nut them in the back, so those are, those are attached right through the sign face.
Thank you.
Yep.
So Daddy's Dairy, you'll have those letters?
As well as Ice Cream.
Ice Cream also will have those same letters, just different color.
That's right.
The white on red versus red on white.
Correct.
Okay. Joe, any questions?
No, it looks good to me. We know how it's going to be lit, and that seems acceptable. That's fine.
Rob, anything?
I think it's a good improvement. I like the 3D, you know, over the backlit.
My question is, can you name the 80 flavors?
I make them, so...
In your sleep?
In my sleep.
Didn't see any samples.
Paul, anything?
No, we, um, so we currently have two applications in play. We have a special permit application for an internally illuminated sign, and this is one that's externally illuminated. And so after the board takes a vote on this new revised sign, it recommended the applicant request to withdraw the special permit, and the board can vote to accept that. And then we'd ask John to follow up with an email or a letter, something in writing saying that you're withdrawing the special permit. Otherwise, the planning board is going to have to vote on the special permit application, and it would be unnecessary, just...
You follow, you kind of follow what he's saying.
Do we need to withdraw it ahead of time before the vote?
It's up to you.
It's up to you if you want to withdraw the application for special permit. You can do that without prejudice and...
Yeah, we'd like to do that.
Okay.
Motion took, sir?
Okay. So we have a motion, and do we have a second? A second to accept with the withdrawal of the special permit application for an internally-lit sign. Al, anything else on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, unanimous, four zero. And now we'll talk about the externally-lit sign, which does not need the special permit. And my only, I appreciate you coming back.
Oh, thank you.
I know last time we, you know...
That was fine.
Kind of jumped, you know, we're just really trying to, and you'll see as, hopefully you have a long, beautiful career in the...
We thought it was a long shot, anyway, so it wasn't really, yeah, that was fine.
Hopefully, you'll see, you're there for many, many years, and you'll see a lot of improvements in downtown as we go forward. Any, I'll entertain a motion on the externally-lit sign.
Second?
I need a motion first.
I'll make a motion that we accept the externally-lighted sign.
Now you've got a second, okay. Anything else on the motion? Seeing none, we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous, four zero. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Just follow up with Paul on that letter.
I'll have to see, I'll write a letter and send it to him.
And anything that, I don't know, if you need them for anything else.
So we will, we're going to write an approval letter for you, and that should be ready tomorrow afternoon.
And then I bring that to the building inspector?
Bring that to the building inspector and get a permit to physically fasten that sign to the wall.
Okay.
It should be all set.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Too bad you weren't open today.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Jam. That rat back was excellent.
All right.
And it was sold up.
Was it the theater? Was it the theater?
Yeah, at the theater, yeah.
Okay, at 7:10, we have a public hearing on a zoning bylaw amendment for the October 7th, 2019 special town meeting. An amendment to the official Norwood zoning map mixed-use overlay district. And Mrs. Holwood is not here, so Joe, I'm going to, if one of...
Robert, you want to read that?
Robert, you want to read the...
Public notice.
Here is the, you got the...
Yep.
Okay, you have it.
In accordance with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 7:10 PM in Room 24, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street, regarding an amendment to the official Norwood zoning map mixed-use overlay district. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on a proposed map amendment to include the property at 145 Railroad Ave. As shown on the town assessor's map as Map 1, Sheet 1, Lot 1, to the existing mixed-use overlay district. The proposed amendment is on file at the Planning Department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours.
Thanks, Rob. So this is a public hearing, and this is to change the mixed-use overlay district that, at the last town meeting, the town overwhelmingly supported. And, Paul, can you just grab, maybe grab the map, or Paul, stick it up there. What we want to do tonight is talk about possibly expanding the new mixed-use overlay district. And why we're doing it so quickly after the last town meeting is no one's rushing to do anything here, but a piece of property on Railroad Avenue, and everyone will know it, is the Dempsey Insurance Building. And Mr. Dempsey came to us and asked if his property could be included in the, or why wasn't it included in the mixed-use overlay district. And come to find out that when we originally laid out the map, we used the existing Central Business District as a guideline for where the boundary should be. And unbeknownst to Mr. Dempsey, or really us, when the Central Business District was established many years ago, that piece of property was not included. And the other piece of property that also will be included, that we're asking, is a, the parking lot, we would know as Norwood Depot, the MBTA parking lot. Now, most people, including myself until a few weeks ago, didn't realize that that is a town-owned parking lot, and the town leases it to the MBTA. So the Board of Selectmen chimed in on that and said, let us, let's also include that while we're doing this. Let's include that parking lot as part of the plan. Who knows what will happen, you know, 30, 40 years from now with that? So it makes a lot of sense to do this. Oh, it's Mr. Dempsey, how you doing?
I'm at 7:30, no?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's okay, we're just doing a little background. So it makes an awful lot of sense to do this. There are Noah Butters, there's no residents around it. It'll square off the property, and it just makes a lot of sense. It was an oversight many years ago why those properties weren't put in the Central Business District, but we can't, as Mrs. Holwood would say, unring that bell. But this is an opportunity now to correct it. Okay, Joe?
This land here is not owned by the town, and I don't believe that is. Is that correct? I think the MBTA...
This is not, I think, this is not owned by the town, but this parcel is, and this is Mr. Dempsey's property.
Okay, so is it this, just the end of this parcel, or is this included too or not?
No, this parcel here and that parcel propose to amend the zoning map to expand the mixed-use overlay district to include this one and that.
Okay, and as you stated before, on the Central Business District, this probably should have been part of it. We're not quite sure why it wasn't. It looks like it was overlooked. I was just wondering if we should also add them into the Central Business District, just to cover everything, clean everything up, right?
I would think that would make more sense to add the both, and then you have clean boundaries on that end of the Central Business District.
And we would just have to make sure we change the wording.
Paul, do you see any, if we were to do that, do you see any ramification why we cannot add it to both, or does it make sense to add it to both?
We'll need to just check with Town Council to make sure that it's okay to add it to the Central Business District as well. That was not, that language wasn't put into the warrant article itself, but we may be able to address it by the motion at town meeting. So I'll talk to David Duca and see whether he sees any issues with that. Otherwise, we can include it in the motion and add it to both the underlying Central Business District and mixed-use overlay district.
So for...
If at one time, both of those parcels were...
Just come through me, Mr., I'll be right with you, Mr. Dempsey. Just so, for conversation tonight, as we open it up to the public, should we, let's talk in terms of it being added to both?
We're talking the entire pink area now, right? Going all the way up?
No, just two parcels. This parcel and that parcel, just this, that.
I think where the others are in the Central Business, currently, we should encompass that and square that map off, and then the others are all covered for any future, as well as the insurance agency.
This property here is the cemetery.
Cemetery.
And then we're into the right-of-way for the railroad. And so this kind of would square it off. It really can't grow much, can't grow anymore that way unless you want to cross the tracks, and the tracks were part of the boundary originally when we set this up. And these abutting properties were already in. And so this is what we originally had proposed after being contacted by Mr. Dempsey asking to be added in, and then this parcel was included at the request of the Board of Selectmen.
So the boundaries of this now would be Railroad Avenue, the train tracks, and this basically the cemetery, the old parish cemetery behind it.
Minus this one little slip.
Minus that, which is MBTA right-of-way.
Yeah, I think it is.
Mr., now, Mr. Dempsey, you...
Originally, that property was owned by a lane development out of New Haven, and when they sold it to the MBTA and me, they cut the parking lot off to give that to the MBTA. But that was originally one parcel.
Any other questions from the board on what we're proposing here, or, Rob, you okay? Al?
You answered my question.
All right, Joe, anything else?
No, other than the fact that, I guess if they did build in here and they did not have a parking lot, they'd be nowhere to get in here, so... Close down the station.
Well, like, that's, it's a town-owned property. That's town-owned property, which I didn't realize until a month ago. So I don't anticipate the town doing anything with it, but they were, the, what a selectman had asked that we, you know, consider putting that into the overlay district and squaring it off. Okay, so it's a pretty cut and dry, that makes a lot of sense, doesn't infringe on anybody, no neighborhoods, nobody lives near there. There's a couple of places people dying to get into.
None more.
They waited all day for that line.
None more, they're closed up, they're full.
They're full. So I will open it up to the public. All we ask is that you, if you have a question, you give me your name and address, and just direct all your questions through the chair. Anyone have any questions on what we're doing here? Ms. Howard?
Judith Howard, Nickel Street. I just wanted to know whether the applicant is intending to build three and four stories high, which is what the mixed-use overlay district encompasses.
This would be, this is going to be brought forth by the planning board to change it, so there's no applicant. Mr. Dempsey had asked that we, he's, but he's, where the, the planning board is going to bring it forward.
I see, but it's because of Mr. Dempsey. Is it possible to ask him his intention?
You can ask him his intention, but...
My intention right now is to do nothing. That's my business. My kids are involved in the business. Long I have firm gone, if they have the option to do something, they can do it.
Right, three, four stories.
Well, whatever is allowed by, in the zoning.
In the zoning, exactly right. The other thing is that the town bylaw could sell that to a developer rather than leasing it to the MBTA, and a developer could build another development complex.
They could. I mean, I don't anticipate that, but...
Is there a possibility that the portion that the town owns not be included in that?
There's a possibility, yes. We could, the town could vote not to include that, but we're proposing that it is included.
Is it the planning board, or is it the Board of Selectmen?
It's the going-to-be town meeting. So what, how this works is, this is a change, a zoning amendment change. The planning board, just so everyone understands how this works, what we're, we are not going to vote if this is going to happen or not. We're going to propose it at town meeting. We, tonight, we are going to make a recommendation to town meeting, either a favorable or an unfavorable recommendation. The people who are going to vote on the merits of this are going to be the town meeting members. And that's on any zoning amendment change, and we have one coming up after this meeting, same thing. The town, town meeting will be the deciding vote. All we're going to do is say the planning board thinks it's a good idea, or the planning board doesn't think it's a good idea. And that is our only, and to hold the public hearing. And town meeting votes by a two-thirds vote, I believe, would have to pass. But to me, it just makes sense. I mean, you know, you look at it, and yeah, it makes sense.
What is the problem, does the town own? I thought that was MBTA.
The town actually, well, Mr., I'm going to let Mr. Maloney use a, what a selectman, you can answer that for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, that's coming, Mr. Plask was brought that up more than once in the past. That parcel, that piece of the parking lot is owned by the town. The back part is owned by the MBTA.
Correct.
So the idea was that if we're going to square it off, let's put the town's piece into the district, anyway. I mean, as long as the MBTA is running a station there, there's probably no other use for it that makes any sense, anyway. But it just, down the line, if 50 years from now, somebody wants to, you know, things have changed, and there's an opportunity to do something else with it, the people want to take advantage of it, it's already grandfathered in.
Does the property go all the way back to the old parish cemetery?
I think Mr. Dempsey's property backs up to it.
The parking lot does as well, right straight around it.
Yep. And then on the, Judith, on the right-hand side, as you're looking at the parking lot where the railroad tracks are, there's a right-of-way by the MBTA, which we're not encroaching on the MBTA right-of-way. They have so many feet off the track that they control. Any other questions? Anything else from the members of the board? At this time, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So, did you get a second?
Okay, so I got a motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous. Public hearing is closed. What's the pleasure of the board on the, on a recommendation, favorable or unfavorable to town meeting?
I make a motion that we act favorably on this.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second, all right. Any more discussion on this? Seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote. All those in favor of a favorable recommendation at town meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Unanimous, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dempsey. All right, we're right on time, 7:25. We have another public hearing.
Good evening.
Good evening. And Rob, do you have the announcement for this one?
I do.
All right, we'll just, we'll wait for them to come on in, and then we'll, we'll... Okay, Rob, I think we're all set.
In accordance, in accordance with the requirements of Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Norwood Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 23rd, 2019, at 7:25 PM in Room 24, Norwood Town Hall, 566 Washington Street. The purpose of the public hearing is to accept public comments on a proposed amendment to the Norwood zoning bylaw, Section 3.0, use regulations by establishing a new subsection 3.6, conversion of certain residential historic structures. The proposed new subsection is intended to provide an opportunity for historic single-family homes built before 1930, having a minimum of 4,000 square feet of interior space to obtain special permit relief to allow conversion of the interior for multifamily use while preserving the building's historic exterior architecture. The draft zoning bylaw amendment is on file at the Planning Department at Town Hall and may be reviewed during normal business hours.
Thanks, Rob. All right, so this is another public hearing, same rules apply. The applicant will give a presentation, the board will ask questions, then we'll open up to the public, same thing, name and address. But before we start, I just got to make a couple of comments, because there's, there's been a lot of miscommunication going around town, basically going around town and on local social media about this, about this zoning change. First off, and just so everyone is clear, there is no project in front of this board, okay? Tonight, we are having a public hearing on a zoning change amendment that could affect about seven to 10 homes in the town. The bylaw change is being brought forward by a homeowner of one of these residents. Tonight, the planning board will vote on the merits of the zoning change and will make a recommendation, either favorable or unfavorable, to town meeting. Town meeting, not the planning board, will decide if the article passes. Any project that comes forward, if town meeting votes in favor of the article, will then come back to the planning board for a special permit in which a public hearing will be held and the merits of the particular project will be discussed. Forget any projects or plans you saw a year ago, or heard about, or read online. There is no project in front of us tonight. We are talking about a zoning change amendment, which is a thought, an idea, a change. There are no plans, there are, we don't know how many bedrooms, we don't know what color they're going to paint the bathroom, okay? That would all come down the road if a lot of things have to happen before that. So just, hopefully, I answered some of the questions tonight. And at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Attorney Hearn and...
All right, I was waiting for the rest of the end.
No, that's it, I said my piece.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, David Hearn Jr. appearing on behalf of the petitioners for this matter, Robert Bagory and Barbara Rand, who were the owners of 289 Wallpole Street. And Mr. Bagory is here. Also with us is Michael Diano, who has been working on this matter with the property owners. I appreciate your comments because, Mr. Chairman, because I have read in the newspaper some statements that were erroneous. I have read something that was on the radio that I think was perhaps a little bit poff, but they apparently didn't have the opportunity to speak with anybody directly connected with the matter. And I do want to clarify for folks who may miss, may not understand what this is about, what it is about. This proposed new section, it would be numbered 3.6 in our zoning bylaws, is a provision designed to give the owners of certain older homes in our town the opportunity, it's not mandatory, somebody who owns a property that might fall within the criteria that are laid out in the proposed Section 3.6 would not be required to apply under 3.6. It wouldn't affect their ownership, wouldn't affect the status of their home. But what is intended here is to provide a provision that would allow the owners of certain homes, and they're defined in the section, as a single-family residence built before 1930, containing at least 4,000 square feet of habitable space. Somebody who owns one of those properties could, if they wanted to, if this were passed by town meeting and became part of the bylaws, somebody owning one of those properties could apply to the planning board for a special permit that would allow the conversion of that property to two, three, or four separate residential units, provided that the historic exterior of the structure is substantially maintained without major change or alteration. And for the purposes of calculating the 4,000 square feet that are required before a property could even be considered under this provision, additions or alterations to the structure that were constructed in or after 1930 would not count. So it's not as if somebody could take an older house built before 1930 and tack on a couple of thousand... and tack on a couple of thousand square feet and then say, oh, now I qualify. It has to have been in existence with that much living space prior to nineteen thirty. The house has to have been built by that time and must have had four thousand square feet prior to that time. Now, what I think many of us are aware of is that a lot of older houses in the town have been torn down over the years. In my neighborhood, across the street from us, was what we called the O'Neill Estate, I think it was the Cox Estate before that, Dr. O'Neill's house, was a large house that was knocked down, maybe twenty, in the last twenty or twenty-five years. And a bunch of newer houses were built, very nice houses, and very nice neighbors came from that, uh, those houses that were built. But it, this is an example of an historic house, um, that went back and, a, a bit in our history, and that meant something, um, being demolished because it was no longer practical, no longer practical for single-family uses. The house at two eighty-nine Walpole Street, we think, is in a similar situation in that it is of a size that it no longer appeals to the average single-family, um, in terms of the space and the maintenance. And the likely effect of all that is that sometime down the road, the present owners decide they're not gonna live there anymore, or they die, and their estate representatives decide, we don't wanna own this anymore, and they sell it, and somebody buys it and knocks down the house. What we're trying to do here is to propose a way that, um, houses that fit the criteria that are laid out in the section, um, can be preserved, their exterior is preserved for their historic value, for the architectural value, for the beauty of it. I was talking with, uh, somebody the other day who happens to be a town meeting member, and we were chatting about some of the issues coming up before town meeting, and this came up, and she said, well, I drive by and I love to look at that house. I've never been in it, but I love to look at it. And frankly, you alluded to the color of the bathroom and all that, and I think you know, zoning cannot dictate what goes on inside a house in terms of what you use this room for or that room for. Building codes can dictate certain things. And zoning can dictate the type of use that's made of a structure, but zoning can't dictate what's inside in terms of whether you have this room as your living room, that room as a bedroom, or anything like that. So the idea behind this is to create a means by which people who own these houses have an option. They don't have to elect that option, but they have, they would have that option to preserve a house that otherwise might be knocked down, um, and save it, but repurpose it for a use that is more in keeping with today's needs, uh, today's desires of homeowners. There aren't too many people out there who would buy this house. There are plenty of people who would buy the property and knock down the house. And, um, so, you know, I know there are concerns about density. Let's say you found a large family that wanted to buy this type of house, if you could. They might have four, or five, six cars anyway. By the time the kids come along and get to the teenagers and all that, a couple of people living there, uh, two or more adults living there, you're gonna have the same density, the same traffic as you might have converting this to three or four condominium units with maybe a couple of people living there. They're not likely to be of the size, simply by the restrictions of space that we have, to have more than two or three people living in each unit. So the density issue is not really that big a deal. It's different, but it's not something that's going to change the exterior of this house. The idea is to preserve it. And the bylaw, uh, as proposed, you know, would require it to be, uh, the historic exterior must be substantially maintained without major change or alteration. Now, major change or, or alteration, that language is in there because it might be necessary in a few spots on a house, on the exterior, to add another means of egress for safety or convenience. Well, that's a change to the exterior, but it wouldn't really be a major change or alteration. So, you know, we've talked with you before about this, we were here a couple of weeks ago, and we appreciate that time to talk about it. There is a, a, a write-up in the yellow sheets for the town meeting members to try to explain this. But, but let me just comment again. The statement that I saw on the Norwood Record that this would allow more than four condominiums is just wrong. Somebody misheard, misunderstood, or whatever. This is, um, uh, really something that's designed to preserve. And I would think that people who are concerned about preserving the history of the town as represented by these older and larger homes would be in favor of this type of, of provision. Otherwise, you know, I, I'm not saying this, that it's a given, but the likelihood that what happens to this house and some of the other larger houses is that sooner or later they're gonna get knocked down because people can't afford to maintain them, um, and keep them up, they can't, they don't have the size of families to occupy them. Remember, when this house was built, you had not just several family members living there, you also had live-in servants and all. So these houses were built a particular size, uh, to deal with the circumstances of the day. We don't have those types of circumstances anymore. So, uh, that really is the extent of my comments. I don't know if Mr. Bagory has any more comments to add on it. He's owned this house for forty-plus years and views himself, I think, as a caretaker of history to some extent. And he can tell you an awful lot about the house if you're interested in hearing about it. And Mr. Viano is very experienced in real estate, um, in this area and has been for many years, he can comment on it. But I think also, Mr. Chairman, your comment that it affects maybe six to ten houses in the town that we find fall in that category, we're actually gonna go back and look again because I found one based on a comment somebody had made that wasn't on the list we had previously prepared, um, but fit the cat, you know, the categories. So, we're happy to take any questions, and we know there may be people here who want, have comments, and we might have some responses to that.
All right. Joe, any question, comments?
Yeah, last time we talked about, uh, the criteria, and we wanted to make sure that, um, there was one issue we were interested in, and that was the facade. If, um, you could build up around a building, uh, we wanted to make sure that, as you stated, you, you had someone who came by in a car and they liked to see the facade. Certainly, we would not wanna have that blocked. And we talked about putting some more language in, but I don't know if it's been changed. But perhaps Section Ten Point Four Point Two would, would be able to cover that, but I'm not sure, I don't have that in front of me. You know, as far as a criteria for us is to make sure that, uh, the curb appeal is still there, and people can enjoy it, as you say, that person speaking about, driving by and enjoying it, that, that's what it's all about, I think.
Well, I, 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 are you referring to the idea of some other building going up that would block the view?
Yes.
Well, um, I mean, I think there are ways to deal with that, whether it's deed restrictions, uh, plans that show building envelopes that would preserve the view of the property if the property ever had any other buildings on it. You could do that, I don't know that in zoning you can dictate exactly, but you might impose as a condition.
I, I think, uh, it's just one criteria we could consider as a planning board, as, you know, when we go to look at it. And I think that's all we, we need, and I just wanna make sure that we, we covered it there. There were certain things we, there were certain criteria that, uh, we're allowed to look at, and I just wanna be very specific about that. Unless it is covered, unless we can find, uh, someplace where that would...
It would almost go against the, 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 what's the word, uh, of the, the fever, the, the fervor of the, the amendment to block it. You know, we're doing this to, to preserve it, so it's, it maintains, so we maintain it, it would almost, you know, it kinda goes against the grain to say, now we're gonna put up a house in front of it. So, all that work to save it and go through all of this to, to preserve the house, and we're gonna, we're gonna block it, and no one's gonna see it.
And I think that, um, this board could consider conditions if you were presented with a special permit application...
Yeah.
...that would affect the location of buildings. And, and I think the current owner, uh, your view is that you would, you would never wanna block the view.
Yeah, that's true.
And deed restrictions is another thing, that it's not something you can impose so much, but, well, maybe you can, actually. There are some zoning decisions, that's something I could talk with Mr. Alkeotis about. We understand the concern, and we actually, I think, Mr. Sheen, agree with you that that would not be something that we would wanna see happen either, that my clients would wanna see happen.
Whether your client or anyone else comes along, I'm sure that, you know...
They, they, they hopefully will have control over it from the point of view of imposing conditions or restrictions on any sale.
Right, we had discussed putting, adding some language, but I didn't, I don't see it, so...
Well, we're still working on it, and I, I was away for the last week, so I was limited in what I could work on, but I have some language that, um, uh, some idea of, of what might be, um...
I, I think we won't be meeting until after town meeting, so I...
Right.
You know, this is an issue I thought we would be taking care of tonight. Let me, um, just to be sure.
Could that be... We could handle that in a special permit process, right?
That's where it would be, but I just wanted to, to say that that's something the board can consider.
I can, I can share with you a draft of something that's not necessarily the most polished, but let me get it in front of me here. It adds a paragraph that might deal with your concerns. This should be enough to go to everybody, if you can pass those down. There's a second paragraph here that would impose conditions. The first is the same as what you've seen before, Mr. Sheen. The only change was to make it paragraph, uh, subparaphrase.
Mr. Chairman, I suppose we can go one more set. One more set.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Chairman, that is a rough first draft, but, um, the idea would be that the, this would call for potentially imposition of conditions if somebody thought they might want to locate additional buildings. You could impose conditions, and, um, now, I did put a sentence or two in there that the, any of these conditions wouldn't take effect unless somebody actually converted the building. In other words, if you grant a permit and then they decide for whatever reason they don't like it, or they're not gonna go forward with it, then, so long as they don't convert the building, they're back to where they were.
Back to, back to wherever was the underlying zoning.
The zoning applies.
Yeah.
Without the option of Three Point Six. So I don't know, Mr. Sheen, of that...
I, I like that, I, I do like what I see, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, there might be a few words to change here and there, but the, the idea is that the board, if this were before the planning board, the board might say, well, okay, um, we wanna make sure you don't block the view, so we're gonna put some conditions, reasonable conditions about where something else might go, if anything else is ever built on that tract of land.
Anything else right now, Joe?
Uh, the only thing is, I guess, to, procedurally, to get this in place of this, I, I guess we definitely can figure that a little later, but I do like this a lot better than...
I think, I, I think procedurally, the motion has to be drafted, and the motion could have either the original language or the proposed language. This is coming from the petition. Notice has been given on the warrant of what the subject is, and I think that notice would be adequate. I'm not making that ruling, by the way.
Right.
But, um, so as far as notice is, it's adequate, but the motion itself is what comes before, and we only vote on motions, we don't vote on articles. So the motion would...
Would be...
If, if, after we review it further and maybe a discussion with Mr. Alkeotis, if there's tweaking to be done, this might be, that might be essentially the final motion language. But we haven't drafted the motion yet.
And that'll come from the applicant?
It's our motion.
Okay, well, I can support this a lot better than I can support the, uh...
The original, okay.
Anything else, Joe, this time?
No.
Al?
Well, the end of this had me concerned, before, before I saw this, I was concerned, that if you have the large enough parcel, you're gonna do the house, okay? And then you subdivide the property, take a piece of it off, and some, and build on that. You know, I'm looking for restriction on the total parcel as it's presented today before we, we issue a special permit for it, okay? But now, the end of this says, you know, uh, if, if said residence is actually converted from single-family status to two or more units pursuant to a special permit granted pursuant to the Section Three Point Six. And none of said conditions shall prohibit the division of said land into additional residential parcels.
Which is what they can do today.
Right, we can do that today if we want. But if, if, say, say an application comes in, and the board is inclined to grant a special permit but wants to protect the view, which is what I've heard expressed, then you impose conditions that say, all right, you can have the special permit, you can make it three, four units, whatever the number is that's being requested, but you can't build anything, and we're going to impose these conditions on this lot that you can't build anything, we're gonna put reasonable conditions that don't allow just willy-nilly putting a building wherever somebody wants to. In fact, I would expect in that case, somebody would come in with a plan that shows building envelopes that would be designed to preserve the view, and you might adopt those as part of the conditions approving it. And if you don't like it, you don't have to vote for the special permit. The special permit's not as a matter of right, and this second paragraph is designed to say, this board can add, can add specific conditions that deal with the concern about blocking the view.
Yeah, but can this restrict subdivision?
You can't.
You can't, right?
You can't restrict subdivision, but you can restrict where the buildings go on the, on any new lots. That's, that's what...
If you're gonna leave this in here, in my opinion, it, it's the same as letting them knock it down and, and building it to two, three, four lots.
That is what would be done. That is what would be done.
Yes, oh, I understand that, unfortunately.
Well, now, this, this language is designed to respond to the concern that Mr. Sheen expressed, in which, I was thinking about it today, um, that there's some concern about, well, gee, you know, if you get a special permit and then somebody turns around six months later, after the building is converted to multiple units, and then turns around and plops a house down right in front of it such that the historic and archi, and architecturally significant view is no longer there...
Mm-hmm.
Why do we grant a permit? Well, this says, if you're considering granting the permit, you can put conditions on...
You could put a condition on it, yeah.
...that would say, you can't put a house right in front of it, you know, any additional...
But you can't restrict it as a subdivision, counsel.
We'd create, somebody could create lots, but you can say where, if those lots are created, you can say where those, what are the locations where a building could be put to impose your concerns or, or to respond to your concerns about preserving the view itself. It does no good to put houses in front of the house we're trying to preserve the view of.
Yeah, you're correct, that, yeah.
But the present owners, I think, would be inclined to put restrictions that respond, not just to conditions of the board, but would bind any owner, ever.
We wanna make it look like it's a cohesive type thing, that it belongs there in both the lots.
But if you get four units, and somehow three people buy three of the four units, and it's a condominium association, and they make some votes of additional things they wanna do, I want it to be restricted.
That's not, that's not in the law.
Wait a minute, what, what, I, I didn't hear the end of it, though. So the condominium association votes to do what?
They wanna subdivide the parcel.
They're bound by whatever decision this board makes that goes on record. I mean, that, the, the special permit runs with the land and binds the successors in ownership, the same way that a variance does, the way that anybody does. You don't get out from under it simply by conveying it to somebody else. So they can vote all they want, they can't overcome the terms of a special permit decision that allowed the conversion of the property. They can't do that. So, so if, if this board says, you can have a special permit, but we're gonna tell you in granting that special permit where, if at all, additional buildings can be put, um, if somebody does carve lots off, that's gonna bind everybody, not just the current owners, but they, whoever buys it from them. not just the current owners, but whoever buys it from them, whatever people might own condominiums, they're all going to be bound by those same rules. They don't get out from under it. So if you're concerned that a condo association might decide to change it, it's very nice if they think they can, but legally they can't, and this board would be able to, and the building inspector would be able to enforce the conditions of, of this board's decision.
And this would be filed at the registry, so, and it runs with the land, so our decision would be there, and so anyone who comes along wants to buy it is going to see that the restrictions and.
The actual decisions get recorded in the registry and are indexed so that they're found by any, anybody examining title when there's a transfer or a mortgage transaction going on.
And the other, other item I had, you talked about minor renovation and whatever, you talked about putting a door in for an access or exit.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any restriction on the number of square feet that, that, that can take? And in addition, is there any restrictions for the overall, right now it's 4,000 square feet, but as part of this, we need to do another 500 square feet to make the four, four units more saleable?
This, this is not intended to, this is not intended to completely prohibit minor changes to the exterior, but the language says, and, and this board would have to decide whether proposed change to the exterior is allowed. You'd have to decide that if you were being asked to allow.
Through a waiver of the square footage?
Well, I don't even know, we'd have to decide.
I mean, if you came, if you came and said, I need another 500 square feet, I need to put a little something, carport or something on the thing or whatever.
Well, the 4,000 feet has to do with the living space, habitable space, so that's, that's a minimum. But let's say we have to build a little bulkhead or something for somebody to get in and out.
I think you're referring to living space, right, to, 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 to go from three to, say, to go from three to four units, you need another 500 square feet to make it work.
And I got to expand the footprint to do that.
I think that's.
I think the board would, it would be up to the board to decide whether that's allowable or not, whether that would be a major change or alteration that affects the historic exterior. It'd be up to the board to decide that. You'd have the discretion.
But that's after the fact.
What do you mean, after the fact?
That they're, you'd say it's a board decision.
No, you couldn't make the conversion from single-family to multiple units without this board approving what was being done.
Okay, so now, from a single family, I'm saying four units.
Okay.
And I, then we get the approval. Then I come back and say, the four doesn't really work because I need another 500 square feet.
And the board can say no.
But it has to come back to the board. He can't go to the building inspector?
No, the building inspector wouldn't have authority to vary the terms of a special permit.
You'd have to come back here and ask for relief.
That would be a modification that would, yeah, I mean, you know, we've all, I've been involved, you folks have sure have been involved in various.
Is it a minor or a major?
Minor or major. You can decide what it is, too.
We would decide after the vote on what we thought that was.
Yeah, so it would still remain, you know, you, the board that grants the special permit, or in the case of a variance, say, the Board of Appeal, Zoning Board of Appeal, the boards that make those decisions have a continuing or retained jurisdiction over the terms of those decisions, and, and the building inspector can't modify those, and the property owner can't modify those without consent from the relevant board. Now, some of them are minor modifications, in some cases the planner is authorized on some of these minor things we come up with on, on different projects. Others are major, and the board can decide, you know, nobody can do anything with this. If we give you a special permit, nobody can do anything with this unless they come back to us, and then you get another, if, if, if the owner of the property or somebody developing it wants another bite of the apple, you control that apple, whether they get the other bite and whether they, or what happens. That's up to the board, not, not the owner. So they can't go and say, see, thanks very much for the special permit. We need another 500 feet, so we're just going to build it. Can't do that. And the building inspector gets copies of all the recorded decisions on special permits and variances. He knows what the terms are. The planner gets copies of what's been recorded. He knows what the terms are. So if somebody going to do, on a building project, they're not going to get the permits they need or the certificate of occupancy if it doesn't match up with what's been approved. And in fact, it might be cases where the actual plans are filed with this board and become part of the decision, depending upon what's being done. Let's say somebody comes in and says, we need to add a little bulkhead in the back for a door with a covering, you know, maybe a little roof so you're not soaking wet while you're trying to get the key.
So my wife doesn't get wet carrying in the groceries.
Yeah, yeah, so, because you didn't open the door quickly enough. So, let's say that's done. Well, I would imagine that this board would expect that somebody would come in with a sketch showing the proposed alteration, not just leave it to the property owner to, oh, yeah, sure, go ahead and do something. I think it would be, you'd expect, and you'd insist upon somebody coming in with a sketch saying, all right, we're okay with that. We approve that. That then becomes part of the decisions, on file in the planning office, and binds everybody going forward and can't be changed without action of the board. So, I, I mean, I hope that answers the question. It may have been a long answer, but.
Clock's running.
You might have already answered this question. I'm not, I got a little lost. However, any such conditions shall be enforced and applicable to said land only if the residence is actually converted from single-family status to two or more units pursuant to a special grant, special permit granted pursuant to the section 3.6, and none of said conditions shall prohibit the division of said land into additional residential parcels pursuant to applicable law.
Right.
Can you explain that a little?
I hate to say it, but originally clause B was one long sentence. Now it's two long sentences, but divided in the middle. The idea of that sentence that you just read, Mr. Bamber, is that we wouldn't want, i- if the board granted a special permit and for some reason the property owner did not take advantage of it, decided, you know what, it's great we got a special permit, but we're not going to, decided we're not going to use it. So therefore, we're not dividing the, you know, we're not creating new units in a single-family building. We decided we're going to leave things as they are. The conditions that might be imposed by the board in that type of decision only kick in, only take effect when the property owner actually takes action based upon the special permit. If they decide after a special permit is granted that we've changed our minds, we're not going to, to do it, then, then the conditions, there's no reason to have the conditions because they're not getting it, you know, they've decided not to take advantage of the benefit of proposed section 3.6. I'll give an example. A number of years ago, we were going to build over our garage, a small in-law apartment type thing for my mother-in-law. We had to get a special permit. The house was non-conforming, built well, you know, before the current rules went into effect. We got the special permit, and then circumstances changed. We didn't build it. We didn't take advantage of the special permit. We just let it lapse. That's what I'm thinking about here in saying that. I wouldn't want somebody to say, well, the planning board gave you a special permit. It said you could only build in certain areas and do certain things. That's fine if the property owner takes advantage of the special permit to convert the historic structure, but if they don't convert the historic structure, then things should go back to the way they were before anyway, and the regular rules should apply.
What if they went in reverse? What if they split the land up first and developed it and then tried to use the overlay?
Well, it's not an overlay as such, but this board could say, we don't like what you did, and we don't have to grant it. You, you get to consider whether, in considering whether to allow the conversion as proposed, the planning board, in addition to the factual findings for a special permit required in the section 10.4 to 2.2, the planning board shall also determine whether the conversion contributes to the preservation of historic aspects of the town. You decide, you guys just put up two houses blocking the view. Now you're coming before us. We don't think that contributes to the historic aspects of the town, and we're not going to give you the special permit to allow the conversion of that house. You can say no. You have that. It's within the control of the planning board. If somebody comes in, if this is approved by town meeting, you know, and that's the other thing. If this is approved by town meeting, it doesn't mean people can automatically do this. All it means is that they have the opportunity to apply to the planning board under the proposed section, and the planning board might still decide, well, we have the authority to grant it. We also have the authority to deny it, and in this particular case, we don't think it's a good thing, and we're not going to grant it. So in that example you just gave, that might be an example where you say, in the exercise of your discretion, you say, that's nice, but we're not going to grant it. You have the right to apply. We don't have the obligation to grant. So you're still protected on that. That's a long-winded answer to your question about a long sentence, but I don't know if it answered the question. I hope it did, but tell me if it didn't, or tell me if there's further questions.
I would just like to know that the spirit of this is kept in that the sightlines from the street are.
That, that's why I've added paragraph B, because that gives the board additional opportunity to put conditions on dealing with that issue that isn't, it, it might be within the spirit of the normal criteria and the spirit of the bylaw, but rather than have an argument about it, whether it's, can be inferred from that, paragraph B is designed to say, the board can impose conditions on this that would help preserve sightlines or whatever you think is appropriate related to that. Now, reasonable conditions, of course, but the spirit of the bylaw and the intention is already laid out in paragraph A as to what we're trying to do, preserve historic aspects, preserve historic architecture. So, yeah, this board would decide whether it was appropriate or not, and you might say, sorry, but not in the facts of this case, we're not going to allow it. And if that's the case, then somebody would go away without the conversion being allowed. They'd still have a large, single-family house that they couldn't do anything else with. What happens after that, of course, and this, I'm not saying this is not a threat or anything like that, but it's a fact of life. You know, I, I saw a beautiful old house on the next street from me. I could see it through the woods, get demolished, and the whole thing turned into a big subdivision.
So, so right now, for a town meeting, people are kind of looking at this, could look at this, one of two ways. You, you save the house, turn it into condos and maybe get some more buildings in the back?
Not necessarily in the back. It could be in the front. Depends on, but it depends on how things could be laid out.
Depends on how much land they have and what, what they can do.
And we're talking not just about this, we're focusing on this property because the owner of this property is who brought it forward and can answer the questions. But there are several other properties in the town that might qualify for this, and their circumstances would, would be very different, perhaps.
Or it's subdivide, knock the building down and subdivide the land and maybe get four, four units.
I'll tell you, I'll show you what you can get.
Try the old shop property.
Yeah.
There's a front, how many houses did they end up when they ripped that down? Eight?
Yeah, but that was, that was a, they had a big piece of land running in from Ellis, you know, off of Maxwell there. But, you know, you could get four houses here easily, but you'd knock down the house.
Yeah, so we're trying not to knock down the house. We're trying to keep the house.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is the balance here. Do we preserve things and find a way to preserve things and repurpose them for today's needs and today's desires, or do we do nothing, in which case sooner or later, this will get knocked down because people won't want it.
So, Rob, just to, and for people in the audience and at home, not just this property, but the seven or eight, 10 properties around town that this bylaw would, could affect. Right now, they have basically two options. You can sell the property to a single homeowner who wants an old, beautiful, historic home and keep it as a single residence. That's option one. Option two, that no one really wants a home of one of these sizes or the upkeep on these, and, and they don't have good Irish families anymore with nine kids. They could buy the, buy it for the property, knock the house down, and put in whatever amount of houses they could on the property. This gives a third option. They don't have to use it, but it gives a third option to save the historic home, to, you know, be able to save it and still make it work for the owner, to, to maintain it. I'm going to give Mrs. Homewood a lot of credit. She said something at the last meeting, and Mr. Attorney Hearn kind of brought it up earlier. The curb appeal, the drive-by effect of these old homes, we've lost so many of them in Norwood, and years ago, a lot of them were converted into nursing homes, and now they've gone. Sunrise was a beautiful one, and they knocked that down and built, you know, nursing home. But not too many people are, are using old homes for nursing homes today. They're building new. This would be an, I'm not going to, I'm not going to, I tell you, I mean, I've been in favor of this for years. I think this is a great way to save. People drive by and say, what a beautiful home. They have no idea what's behind the walls. They just say, it's a, what a gorgeous home. I'll give you my own personal example that I use as analogy is the Forbes Mansion, which has been in Norwood's mind the last year or two. Everybody wants to save the Forbes Mansion. Don't knock that mansion down. Well, it's beautiful. It looks great from the outside. It looks like a mansion from the early 1900s. Inside, it looks like an IBM office building with the exception of one room. The inside of that has been torn apart, you know, it's a, it is, it's sterile, sterile building with the exception of the library. But everybody wants to save it because it's so beautiful from the outside.
It was really nice, though, but probably ruined it.
Right, but, but I mean, this is in today's world. People want to save it, but the inside has been gutted, and, and in these houses, the same thing. It would be a shame to lose your house. It would be a shame to lose, you know, Ernie's house or the, the old Prescott Estate or, you know, Dr. Orm's house or one of these big, beautiful homes. There are very few of them left. It's just giving the person a third option, and I, I make no bones about it. I love historic homes. I think that they're a, a part of Norwood's history, and I think it's a way to preserve them, and I, I think that the, the curb appeal is a, is, comes back to this board. I think, like, I think the word you used is, is right on. I think we all want that. We want the spirit of the bylaw. The spirit of the bylaw is so people can drive by and say, boy, you know, I wonder what the history of that home was, or, or what a beautiful home. And so, I mean, I have been in favor of this for, for years. And Paul, anything to add?
No, but I think it's probably a good opportunity to open the floor to public comments, and we'd ask anybody that's going to speak to please give us your name and address for the record.
Anyone like to, yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Carrie Roman. I live at 293 Wampole Street. I'm in a direct abutter to the Dollhouse Mansion.
Okay.
If you'll pardon my public speaking.
That's okay.
Kind of read from the, from the queue.
No, absolutely.
So, as concerned neighbors slash abutters of 289 Wampole Street, we are opposed to the proposed rezoning of the property. We respectfully ask for no zoning change on this parcel, not because we are anti-growth, but because we are enthusiastic supporters of smart, strategic town development. Our most compelling reasons include, the proposal, if allowed, would completely undermine the historic nature of the home. While keeping the shell of the house the same, building condos within the dwelling would destroy any of its interior architecture and historical significance. This would then open the remaining seven to 10 homes, as previously stated, to meet that criteria and inevitably the destruction of the inside of them as well. Two, secondly, inappropriate use of mid-scale development if the proposition of other homes is to be put within that parcel of land. The neighborhood in which rezoning is proposed is an area of stability, yet the proposed rezoning seeks significant change that will impact the neighborhood negatively. Thirdly, there are schools that are all within three blocks of this proposed rezoning. Adding condominiums will add traffic during construction as well as after it's completed. It will stress out intersections on the streets that have already been heavily utilized by commuters, buses, and students walking the school. More traffic means more drivers and more accidents. It's inevitable. Four, rapid town growth. Norwood is experiencing rapid town growth as evidenced by the significant amount of construction. Norwood is experiencing rapid town growth as evidenced by the significant amount of construction in the past 10 years. The magnitude of change is impacting density dramatically within the area and the existing community within the neighborhood must be considered. Current unplanned growth should not just justify more change or the addition of condos to a residential neighborhood. It should underscore the more direct, that more direction in planning is needed. Neighbors most impacted by the project are against the project. I'm sitting here with another neighbor. As I said before, my family and I are direct abutters. We purchased our dream home at the end, 293, at the end of July, 293 Walpole Street. Aside from the house being a fantastic, larger, being fantastic, a larger level of appeal to this home is the level of tranquility that comes from having a quiet, peaceful location. Any rezoning will negatively impact our family and take away from our atmosphere of the home. Almost every neighbor who lives within a one-block radius is against the rezoning. There has been a public showing of support to oppose the destruction of the historical landmark and even more from the community to prevent the rezoning and destruction of the interior of the Dollhouse Mansion. Preserving the exterior of this structure is not preservation. It's saving only exterior face of the structure and it opens up the land to much more change in the neighborhood. So, just so that you know what I say by direct abutter, this is my driveway that we own the land to. This is the Dollhouse. They have a tree line and then my property is directly behind it. If those trees are gone, if anything is added to this property, we wouldn't have bought the house. There would have been no reason to uproot our family, to purchase this massive investment in our family's future. And I'm a longtime, born and raised in Norwood resident. We wanted to stay in Norwood. We wouldn't have bought this house if we thought that this was anything that could possibly happen to it. So I'll end with that and go to Alyssa.
Okay, I'm just going to have Attorney Hearn respond before we have our next speaker.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the lady and I didn't catch her name.
Harry Rowan.
Rowan, okay, thank you. I appreciate her comments, her comment a moment ago about trees. We're not proposing anything that's going to remove trees, but we have the right to remove them and she has the right to put trees up. We're not required to maintain those. But nothing that we're talking about has anything to do with the exterior of the land, the trees or anything else. And I, I wish, I hope people would understand that. It's not going to change the exterior of this lovely building. Nor can this board or the zoning board or the building department dictate what goes on inside the house. You alluded to what some would consider the unfortunate interior changes at the Forbes Mansion and it's the Forbes Mansion in name only now. But, you know, any property owner is free to change around the interior of their property. I submit that there's likely to be a lot more congestion if we knock down the building and put four single-family houses in there with a cul-de-sac coming out. And, and we have the right to do that without asking anybody's permission other than having this board endorse a plan that it would have no choice but to endorse. So, we understand that. But this, we're not taking down trees that she might like to look at. We're not changing the exterior of the house next door to this property and her property is a nursing home. So the tranquility is affected by that, I'd say, more than what we're doing.
Not at all.
The, Mr. Chairman, the, the, the noise or disruption that comes with construction is something that people have to live with. With, and our town imposes rules relating to noise and hours of operation. But those are temporary inconveniences. And they happen whether we build several houses there, change this around, do interior construction, or put anything else there. So I, the question is whether somebody should have the opportunity to come back to this board and have the board, you know, have the board actually grant something or say, we don't think it's appropriate. But all we're asking for is the opportunity to make that request. We're not asking this board to approve it. We're not asking a town meeting to approve a special permit. It doesn't have that authority. So, I do want to be clear on that, that some of the stuff that people get concerned about are things that are outside of this jurisdiction, outside of the town's jurisdiction. And a property owner is free to maintain trees or not maintain trees. So.
Ma'am, just name an address, please?
Alyssa Phillips, 26 Fisher Street, Norwood, a direct abutter of property. I am, I'm opposed to this article for the request to amend 3.6 of the zoning bylaws. This change would affect a total of, I, I thought originally it was told it was five. Now it's six or seven?
There's anywhere between, say, seven and 10 houses probably around town?
Well, I just thought, you know, thinking, does this change make sense for just a minimal amount of properties that may or may not utilize it to do all this work to change the amendment? There's a strong sentiment among residents here in our town to save or preserve these residences. 289 Walpole Street is a beautiful structure and grounds. The owners have done a great job at maintaining the historical piece of the property. They really have. They've made very good use of the home over the years, but are now ready to move on. And I understand it's very overwhelming and costly to maintain a structure. I do know that the, the house has been on the market before and I do know that it has not been sold, of course. My thought is, it's my understanding that part of the benefit of owning a home is to enjoy it, not the resale value. It's also my understanding if the price was home at a realistic market value, then it would have been sold.
That, ma'am, that's not for this board or has no bearing on, on the, the price.
Okay.
That is, is not our, whatever it was at.
If it was, you know, at a...
Has nothing to do with what we're discussing tonight.
Okay, all right. Well, putting condos in this home does nothing to preserve the historical value. It will be merely a shell. If it did convert to condos, would, would the bylaws, and I think David, you did answer that, enforce that the residents have to maintain the outside and the grounds?
I'm sorry. I'm happy to try to answer the question, but I'm sure I understood the question.
I think, I think it was that, say, say it was converted to three or four condos, would the...
By a special permit for this?
By, by special permit, would they, they would be required to maintain the grounds and the, and the, and the nature of the house?
But if there is no special permit, they're not required to.
Right.
They'd be required to, I'm sorry, they'd be required to maintain the exterior structure of, of the, of the building under the special permit conditions. Yes.
Okay. Our neighborhood is an area of stability. The two homes in our neighborhood that meet this requirement are 289 Walpole Street and 33 Fisher Street. I think it'll have negative, negative impact on the stability of our neighborhood. I've been told that if this article goes through, the developer can come back and request a special permit or variance to allow additional townhouses or condos on the property.
It's, Attorney Hearn, yes or no, but I'll let him explain that. There's no...
That, that's part of the misinformation, Mr. Chairman, that's going on. And the newspapers suggested that and other people have suggested that. Absolutely not. There was a proposal last year that was presented and discussed before the board. It was only discussed. I don't think there was a formal application. I wasn't involved with it, but I happened to be there that night, that involved construction of a bunch of townhouses along the sideline and rear line, I think, of the property. This has nothing to do with that and that would not be allowed. And I think the board made clear that they didn't like that idea. But that would have required multiple changes in the zoning bylaw. So if anybody is laboring under the misunderstanding that that is part of this project or is a possibility, the answer is an absolute no, it is not. It's not part of what we're talking about.
What about, this amendment is for the condo only. What, what about if somebody purchased this land and converted the mansion into condos and then decided that they wanted to build additional homes on, additional lots or homes around the mansion?
That's a possibility, Mr. Chairman. And, but we, that paragraph we've been discussing would give the board authority to say, what could, it couldn't be done in relation to that.
I think each property that this bylaw would affect, each property would have a different set of circumstances based on how much land there was. So if you had a, a large piece of property with a couple of acres, by right, by right, doesn't need a special permit, they can chop off a, a, if it's in S, if it's in the S1 district, 12,000 square feet. If it's in a G district, 10,000 square feet lot, if it has frontage. And, I mean, they can do that by right. They can do it today, they can do it then. The, the bylaw would be though that if, if it's going to block the view of the house, we wouldn't allow it after the fact. But they could do that today if you have enough land. I mean, they just, I mean, it's all, I mean, there are, homeowners have some rights. I mean, you have a right to, to change the interior of your house. If you want to redo your kitchen or bathroom, you have that right. You, anybody who owns any home, you know, like Mr. Attorney Hearn said before, we don't dictate what goes on inside the home. Building inspector would have, you know, codes that have to be followed, that kind of thing. But the planning board has no jurisdiction over what goes on. I, okay, continue.
No, go ahead.
I, I do have a question. If, for example, this was to go forward, and I think I know the answer, the answer would be the same thing as it is today. And we're going to maintain the exterior of the house, the beautiful mansard roof and the facade and all of that. But going forward, we realize that the windows are single-pane, you know, with pulleys and, and we're going to replace the windows to make them more energy efficient, up to speed. Is there any, who makes the call? Is there any kind of design review? Or I know some towns have architectural...
We don't.
Redo, we do not. That would say that the window has to mimic...
Period.
The period. You know, so we're not just throwing vinyl replacements in there or... I mean, who would make that call? Is there, is, is that something that could be a condition on the board? Or is that just by right of the homeowner to do that? I, I honestly don't have the answer.
I think this goes back to the language in the proposed section that says that provided that the historic exterior of the structure is substantially maintained without major change or alteration. Now, if it turns out that a fiberglass or vinyl window might be the best solution from an energy savings point of view, you've got to take that stuff into account too. And that's sort of in the zoning statute. But, okay, so maybe they go get some that kind of look the part. I would think that anybody owning this property, whether it's one of, you know, a few owners of separate units or one owner, would probably be inclined to try to protect and preserve the look of the house and not turn it into something that we're all wondering 10 years down the road, what, who did that?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm familiar with that and I know that there are some like Beacon Hill. There are, there are, there are areas that, I mean, they go crazy for the stuff.
Beacon Hill has their rules. I mean, if they had their way, with the screens on windows.
I have, Beacon Hill's a bad example.
Because our ancestors didn't have screens.
Yeah.
There, there are historic tax credits available under federal tax code and Massachusetts tax code. And those are governed by state and federal historic preservation. But they allow updated, energy-efficient windows in the last five or 10 years because, you know, they're competing interests. But it's done with a view toward making it, making it fit in with the period of the structure.
Look like it belongs.
Yeah, look like it belongs. Just, just on my own personal, I'm not going to defend the applicant here, but I am. I do like the proposal. And, and, I mean, I just think it would be a shame that you have that, that home or any one of these homes, and you're talking about density and traffic, that if that home was knocked down, if this does not go through and down the road it gets sold and, and a developer comes in and levels that home and puts in four or five, you know, four-bedroom McMansions or whatever and make, beautiful homes, I'm not saying that, you know, and all of that. And there's two or three kids in each, you know, that, the, the traffic and, and the, you're gonna, what have you gained? You've lost a beautiful home, but you're still going to have the density. You're still going to have the, the same amount of traffic or if not more.
It's on Route 1A.
Yeah. It's on Walpole Street.
If it affects the two homes in the neighborhood, then there's, there could be something significant.
And that would be a, a condition or, or a factor that the planning board would consider if somebody were applying for a special permit. And, and among the considerations, it's going to be substantially more detrimental than the existing condition. So the time to consider that is if somebody comes in with a special permit application, the, the abutters within 300 feet get notified and they have the opportunity to come in and say, we think this is a bad idea, this is going to affect us negatively or whatever, and have to present their evidence, just as the applicant has to present evidence. So there would be that opportunity. This doesn't foreclose that. This is just to create an opportunity so somebody can apply for this. Right now, you can't do it. There's no way to do it right now.
In closing, you know, I just want to say, if this gets converted to, let's say, four condos and then there's an additional couple of houses built on the lot, that would contribute significantly to the overall community, even if it was as opposed to four houses.
Understood. Anyone else have anything on... Hi, Tony?
Tony Heskey, District 5. I'd like to ask a question based on being a town meeting member. So, through the Board of Assessors, we should be able to know exactly how many pieces of property this zoning change would affect. I hear six, seven, eight, nine, 10. There should be a specific number. Our tax bills are based on how much land we have and how much, and how much living space. So, because this bylaw certainly allows increased density on a lot. And I would like to know as a town meeting member, whose neighborhoods I would be affecting if I voted this.
I can answer that. I can give you what we have. Okay, let's, the Forbes Mansion would be one. This is the list, 190 Sumner Street, which I believe is Ernie's house, Ernie Bock's house. 60 Bullard Street, which is a, we have pictures of them. I don't know whose former home that is.
I think that's Egan's house.
Egan's house.
The Tudor?
That's Egan's house.
It's John Sweeney, his house.
33 Fisher Street, which I believe is the old Lady Kay, the old Lady Kay Nursing, the only Lady Kay preschool that I went to, in my town. 49 Beach, 49 Beach Street, which I believe is Mrs. Homewood's home.
Right.
289 Walpole Street. 8 Chickering Road, which I think is old Dr. O'Day's home.
That's right.
And 9 Warthen Circle, which is on the Ponson Street, which is my next-door neighbor, the old Prescott.
2 Warthen Circle, 2 Warthen.
I'm sorry, 2 Warthen Circle. Which is the old Prescott's home, which is on the Ponson Street. Years ago, it had a big gray fence in front of it.
How many units?
He could probably get two or three in there. Originally was a Talbot home and then the Prescotts bought it from the Talbots in 1913.
There's another one, Mr. Chairman, that I discovered today based on comments that had been related to us. And that is Dr. Orm's house.
Dr. Orm's house.
That was Dr. Segal's property at, at Beach Street at the corner of Beach and Bond. And that qualifies, it was built about 1900 and has over 5,000 square feet of livable space. But, and, and I, in response to Mrs. Esco, I understand your concern. We thought we had a, a list that was covered it all. But it turns out the way these are coded, that one I just mentioned didn't come up when the assessor ran the list of houses that were built before this date and that have that square footage. And the reason it didn't, it's coded a little bit differently because there's a second building on that property that's used, I think, for office purposes.
Dr. Orm's does, yeah.
And so, you know, maybe there are a couple of others, I don't know. And I think we probably would go back and check with the assessor to say, hey, if it didn't turn up as use 1010, which is the list you have, the Beach Street property, I think, was, Dr. Orm's property is use 1090. And again, it's different because it's, I guess, because it has a second building.
I think everybody can agree, these were all... I think everybody can agree, these were all, the homes I mentioned are all beautiful homes. They all have some kind of historic significance to the town. You know, in my own personal opinion, I'm just one guy, I would hate to lose them. I drive by them all the time and never been inside. And I don't know what's, what's inside. I don't know if the insides of these homes have been modernized with granite countertops and fancy bathrooms, and they may have all been already, and-
Ours hasn't.
Yours has not, but, but some have, and I know, I know the Warthen House has. The, I mean, the Prescott House has been, you know, modernized, and it's really to save that, I mean, wouldn't it be nice to still have the, you know, the Eagles Mansion, or the, you know, the Old Plumpton Home, or, you know, even though it was turned into a fraternal organization, I mean, just-
Charles.
I think it's just, but that's just me. That's just me. And again, the, it, this is just an option for the homeowner, and it would have to go through a special permit process, which we invite everybody back. And we would actually have plans, you know, defined plans of what the applicant would wanna do on any one of these properties, and then we would have a discussion on the merits and neighborhood input and all of those things.
But it has to go through town meeting first?
The, the actual bylaw, it has to go through town meeting first.
You want to, Tony, 'cause I wanna respond to Mrs. Esco's comment too, but I don't wanna cut you off. Certainly on your concern about, can we tell you what properties might be affected by this? We're gonna go back and check again, because the coding that was used, there might be a variation on that. But, Mr. Chairman, the properties that would qualify for this, and we'll do everything we can to have a complete list, but the properties that would qualify for this, it doesn't mean they have to apply for it. So if you're concerned about whether you're gonna affect a neighborhood, you don't know that unless somebody comes in and says, "Okay, hey, town meeting passed that, I've decided I wanna take advantage of it," or, I wouldn't. And I can think of a couple of them where the people are not likely to take advantage of it, simply because of their present, living needs or desires. But we were looking for properties that would qualify for this, meet the criteria, and that's what, that's what that list was, and I've just added one property to it today. So I hope that answers the question.
It did very much, thank you. So as a town meeting member, even just hearing some of those addresses, the density to me would change the whole proportion and the appearance of any of those houses. My, my, my second concern though, and I'm a very new person on the Historic Commission, and I have a learning curve. One of, one of the things I noticed in the bylaw is that the planning board shall determine whether such a conversion contributes to the preservation of historic aspects of the town. You have the, you have the addresses of the homes. Does the Board of Selectmen argue, or that, does anybody have the answer as to whether you care about the historic aspect of that home now? Do you really, do you care? I mean, and if the answer is maybe no, you don't, you wouldn't even need this bylaw. And, and, and another point is, this still does not actually positively save any house, because they can still tear it down and do what might be legally allowed on the size of the parcel that they own anyway. I don't know how much acreage goes with these addresses, so even without, say, the Oakview Mansion, even, even without this bylaw, correct me if I'm wrong, even without this bylaw you said, do houses fit on there by right anyway?
Sure.
Four. So, so this just allows more density on any of those historic lots. So I'm not in favor of this at all, as a town meeting member or a Historic Commission member. And it doesn't preclude any of the homes from being allowed to be torn down. I'd rather see a take a breath, six-month demolition bylaw that this town doesn't have, so, so we could think about whether or not we care about this house. But you actually can ask yourself now if you care. But if you wanna talk about the Oakview Mansion, that house is not its history. All 150 years of history.
Yes.
Frank Allen, besides the governor, everybody calls him governor, he's one of your own. He was the chairman of the Board of Selectmen. He was chairman of the Board of Assessors. When he was governor, he appointed two people to, that house is not its history.
Right.
You know the answer to whether you'd like to preserve that house. You can't give me the answer about the other one.
Yes, I can. Yes, I can, I'll give you my answer right now, Mrs. Esco. I care about these houses, or I wouldn't support this article. Now, I don't own any of them, so if I owned one, I could tear it down. If I didn't care about the historic preservation of the home, I could just tear it down and put in four houses or three houses. Now, on some of these houses, they're not all gonna be able to fit four condos. Some may only be able to put one or two in, during, you know, depending on the, they may not be able to get four. So somebody might say it's not worth it to, to do that. I'm not gonna get a bang for my buck for two condos, so I'm gonna tear it down. You know, that would be a shame, but, I mean, I wouldn't support this article personally, I'm just one member of the board, if I didn't care about these, these homes.
Well, I appreciate that, and I'm not saying that you don't care, but of all of them, and I, the drive-by, the beauty of this one is just glorious.
And I, and I think I'm just gonna ask Paul, why we have to include, we just can't include the one property? Right? We have to have this, to change this bylaw.
That would be spot zoning.
It would be spot zoning if we did not come up with some criteria that would affect other properties throughout the town, right? It would be, if we just trying to do this for this one homeowner, it would be spot, spot zoning.
And that's illegal.
And that's illegal.
Not knowing whether or not property owners of the other homes would take advantage of this zoning bylaw, I'm not sure that any of the historic integrity of the home is really going to visually have the appeal, because I don't know what would be going around it, or how it would change. I'm just not so sure all this hoopla is worth it. I'm just not sure.
Then they could, you could tear them down. They could be torn down and lost, right?
Mr. Chairman, responding to that, Mrs. Esco, I think, has made the case for us, in that this is an example of what should be preserved in the town. And if the owners of this house want to preserve this, but do not have that opportunity available to them in terms of what the market will, you know, whether anybody will buy it, but this bylaw change might give them that opportunity. And so if the people owning the other properties aren't interested in doing it, are not interested in doing it now, or whatever, this is the one house she and you, right now, agree on ought to be preserved. Why not give the opportunity to the owners to try to come before the planning board? Now, the exterior is what's being preserved. Nobody can tell you, or me, or you, what to do with the inside of your house. So you can't make people do that. And we don't have a demolition bylaw. And a demolition bylaw is basically a taking of property rights. You know, it, it puts people in very difficult positions. And the town is not going to buy this house. The town doesn't have the money to buy this house, and what would it do with it? As it was, we bought the Forbes Mansion, and we did our best to get rid of it quickly, but we bought it for a particular reason. And it really wasn't historic preservation. It was a different kind of preservation. So I think Mrs. Esco's statements about preservation of this type of building, I agree with her on that. And as far as the other unit, properties go, hey, if they wanna do it, they're fine. If they don't, then they don't have to. But the alternative is fairly certain that sometime down the road, and most of us will probably be alive to see it, this house and several of those other houses will end up getting knocked down, because it's not practical to keep them as single-family houses. The cost and the needs just aren't there, you know, don't, don't work anymore. So, you know, I, I understand, but, and, and none of what town meeting would do would impose anything on a particular property or a particular neighborhood. It'd be up to this board to decide whether the particular proposal makes sense under the facts as presented with respect to a particular property. So it's not giving carte blanche to anybody. It's giving the authority to this elected board. I hope that answers the question.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Esco, if I, if I raise my voice, but I, I, I didn't wanna, it sounded like I jumped back at you.
I can see the hair raising on your neck.
Historically, this house is so significant. The thing that's different now, and I know this has actually been going on for a few years, really, conversation about this house. What's different now is now we just finished, you know, one year with this CPC funds, and we got an infusion, you know, there was that infusion of some funds this summer, although I don't know what the New Balances are yet. But we will know soon. But I, I would hope that the town could have come up with a subcommittee to look at this in a more unified way. I can understand why some people couldn't wrap themselves around the Cameron Forbes estate. It did not have the constant visual continuity that people have going by 1A and seeing this. And also, this is one of our own, Frank Allen, his wife and three children, they're all buried in Highland Cemetery. This is a completely different, this, this house is not its history. We're coming up on 105th anniversary. This house is not its history, this Frank Allen and the Winslows. So I, I just hope the future's not dead for this house.
I agree with you. Believe me, that's why I'm supporting the article. I, I, I would hate to, I mean, you can't put a, I think, way back, many, many years ago, when I first got on town meeting, there was a proposal for, I think you alluded to it, it was called demolition, that if someone had a home, an older home, you had to wait six months before you allowed the homeowner to demolish it. It was like a waiting period to see if a buyer would come forward, or there was some reuse of the house, and that's what we're doing now. It was soundly defeated at town meeting. And, and the purpose is, is, you know, if you're, you're a homeowner and you wanna move, or move on, why I have to, you know, I have to wait six months so the town can do whatever they had to do? And then six months later, say, "Okay, do what you want anyway." And so it kinda tied the hands of the property owners and, and-
But that didn't go, did it?
It did not. It, it failed nicely. But, all right, any other, Mr. Howard?
Judith Halli, Chair of the Historical Commission. I'm listed on this list, 33 Fisher, and that actually, part of their history is part of the Governor's Mansion, is the same thing. I'd just like to ask a couple of questions, and one is, how big is the property?
Which property?
289 Walpole Street.
Couple acres?
Eighty-six thousand square feet.
Eighty-six thousand, two acres, roughly?
Yeah. Is it permissible to ask Mr. Piguri how much the house is for sale?
You can ask, but he doesn't have to answer.
One point five million dollars.
One point five, thanks. And my other remarks and comments, I will wait for October 7th for special town meeting to present a speech.
Okay.
Five minutes, five minutes only.
May I ask, is Ms. Howard speaking on behalf of the Historical Commission or on behalf of herself?
Actually, the Historical Commission has been concerned about this property for many years. But I will ask the other members, we just had a meeting last Monday here in this room. And it was the consensus of the commission, the Historical Commission, to inquire about this house, to make comments on this house. And I will send another email, they can respond to me in my speech, they can approve it, disapprove it, whatever it is. If they disapprove it, I will make the comments as town meeting member from District 3.
I'm sorry. Will you hold a published, a public meeting, publicly noticed meeting to discuss this? The commission can't meet by email.
No.
Did the commission take a position on the matter yet?
Yes, they've taken a position not only last Monday, but they've taken a position in previous years. The other thing is that the meeting on Monday was publicly notified for the open meeting law.
Okay.
We have to do that. Each commissioner can send me, they don't have to notify each, I mean, the entire unit. They can send me an, an email individually.
Ms. Howard, I just like the, as a chairman of the Historical Commission, and just, I don't know, as, as we're discussing this, just keep in mind in your deliberations with the Historical Commission that, I, I know everyone's focusing on this one piece of property here tonight, because the applicant is here, and it's, it's probably the most well-known of all of the properties. But the bylaw is to preserve, possibly preserve-
Townwide.
Townwide. There are, there are, so, I mean, it's, I would think the Historical Commission would, would kinda be thinking out of the box, as this is, to, to, to save some of these homes. And this is a way to possibly do that. You know what I mean? And so just, don't, and I want people to understand, in a town meeting, I'm sure Attorney Hearn will, you know, give a great argument that, as much as we're focused on this one piece of property, and, because that's the most well-known and probably the most beautiful of them all, and I'm, I'm not saying the other ones aren't, but it's, it, the bylaw will affect more than just this property.
We understand, but if they didn't come up with this original plan, deal would not be this.
Well, I give them credit for thinking out of the box, and this was actually brought up when we did the bylaw change about 10, 12 years ago, and when Steve Costello was still the planner. And, and we rewrote the bylaw and came up, and at the time, didn't, didn't make it into the book, unfortunately. I thought at the time, but I'm just one vote.
I appreciate Ms. Howard's concern about preservation, and she and I agree on a lot of that. In fact, I appreciate of her quote that it should not be raised, her quote on BZ Radio today, relating to this particular, the property, the Oakview property. But, and it's referred to as the Governor's Mansion, but we don't have a Governor's Mansion in this state. It happened to be the home of a fellow who was the governor at one point. Before that, it was the home of his in-laws, the Winslows.
But Norwegites have for years referred to it as the Governor's Mansion.
They have, they referred to it as-
A lot, it's got, it's got more names than-
And the cynical.
It's got more names than, Kat has got pills.
But, but in any event, I appreciate that she also agrees it should not be raised, and we're looking for an opportunity to be able to repurpose it and preserve it, rather than having it get knocked down, which is the likely event sometime down the road, when these folks no longer want to have it, and they can't be made to own it forever now. So appreciate her comments in that respect. We disagree, I think, on how to get to the preservation. We agree on preservation.
Ms. Howard, another question?
I was just gonna mention, and I forgot, and thank you for bringing it up, that this morning, just out of the blue, I have no idea how it even happened, that I got a telephone call, and this correspondent from WBC Radio rang me up and asked me if we could meet with me, and we did, we met in downtown. And he interviewed me and asked me many questions. How he got all of this information was behind me, but he had, he had all the information regarding 289 Walpole Street.
Well, when it comes to know of history, they want the right person.
Oh, well, thank you.
Judith, I wish you, I would have loved to have had coffee with you, I see you talking this morning.
Knocked anywhere to pot.
Careful, Mr. Parker.
A lot of the information, a lot of the information that's out there is just incorrect.
Correct, and that's what we're trying to, we're trying to clarify.
Google it, it's right, you can see pictures of it.
Are there any other questions from the audience that would, anything that we didn't cover, or that you would clarify? Again, this will go to town meeting, so town meeting members will be able to vote. If you are not a town meeting member, you can still speak on the matter, just show up at town meeting ahead of time, see the moderator, and who won't be, Mr. Attorney Hearn, it'll be someone else. And you can get, be registered to speak. So even though you're not a town meeting member, you will still have an opportunity at town meeting to speak.
Mr. Chairman, anybody who wants to speak on this can, if they want to, either they can just raise a hand and they're called, and they'll be a temporary moderator for this article, because of my connection to it. But prior to the meeting, now that the warrant is out, anybody who wants to speak on any of the matters come up for town meeting, can register. can register by sending an email to moderator@norwoodma.gov.
There you go.
And that way I have it in writing, and I'll pass it on, if it's on this matter, to the temporary moderator, but that's the best way to become a registered speaker if you want to register.
Would you mind repeating that?
Absolutely, moderator@norwoodma.gov. And that is my official email for the town.
Uh, just one more comment, was this presented to the board, oh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
This is presented to the Board of Selectmen?
Um, I don't believe so.
It was presented to the Board of Selectmen to, to ask that they put it on the warrant.
But then sent back down here.
They voted, I understand they voted last week not to take a position on it, and to leave it to the planning board in town meeting.
Okay.
I believe, after seeing the, the selectmen's meeting on that, when they voted not to take a position, it's because I believe at the time, a lot of the misinformation was out there, and they, and we haven't had our public hearing yet. So, but that's.
You've got, you've got a revised draft that was not available to anybody before today.
Okay, I'm gonna go around the room one more time. Patrick, is there anything that you would add, questions that you see is a, that we're missing maybe, or you?
No, I mean, I think, you know, obviously the addition of that paragraph, yeah, I think that was kind of a concern hearing from the board.
Okay, Rob, anything else that you'd like to add or a question that, uh, that you'd like to clear up?
I think I'm, I think my questions were answered.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Joe?
Just a question procedurally, I just wanna make sure we're voting on the right thing. We had one page, another, the second page was added, I just wanna make sure that, that this is the one that we're interested in, the one that I'm interested in.
He has the second paragraph.
It says B, paragraph B.
May I see that for a minute? Okay, uh, Mr. Chairman, for the record, I'm happy to sign a copy, maybe the planner's copy, so we have the final one and date. So that you, this is what we would ask you to pass on since that's what we discussed. Also, I'm happy to file a copy of this plan, since we've discussed it as an exhibit, if the board wants a copy in the, in the file. So people can see what's allowed as a matter of right.
That's by matter of right, but not a, a plan, not a subdivision plan?
No, this is what could be done as a matter of right. Yeah, I forgot to change the version date on the first page.
Okay, and finally, Paul, you've been very quiet here. Anything that you'd like to add, or anything that we've overlooked maybe, or procedurally, or any, any other way?
I think the board had a good discussion in, in the comments from the neighborhood residents, we're all good, and the board had a productive discussion. Like many issues that the planning board faces, and many planning issues, there are often trade-offs, and they're not black and white issues. There's definitely an interest in protecting and preserving historic buildings in town, but on the other side of that, the economic realities of what it takes financially to preserve historic properties are, are a serious reality, and, and most things come down to the bottom line being money. And so, what we have here is, is the risk of seeing the building razed and additional homes built on that site if this, if this article isn't approved at town meeting. If it is approved, then there, there will be some increased activity and density within the, the structures themselves, and that, you know, can, can have an effect on, on changing the neighborhood. So, this is one, again, one of these situations that there's, there's clearly no clear winners or losers, but there are trade-offs, and I think the board members and town meeting, the decision makers, the town meeting members will have to wrestle with those trade-offs and, and decide on their own how they want to vote. At this point, I think, you know, we've had over an hour of, of discussion. I'm gonna recommend that the board vote to close the public hearing, and then, under state law, the board's required to provide a report to town meeting, and I've always recommended that that report include a clear recommendation whether or not the board recommends that town meeting members vote to support or not to support an article.
Okay, thanks, Paul. Attorney Hearn, I'm gonna give you the last word, anything before we close the public hearing?
All I can say is, we're asking, we hope this board will recommend it to town meeting, we hope the town meeting will approve it, and we recognize, and we hope that everybody concerned with this will recognize that if the town meeting approves it, it only means, and it, not only, but it means, that the owners of these properties would have the opportunity to come to this board, and this board could still say no, say yes, impose conditions. So it's not a carte blanche, or blank check, or anything like that, it's simply an opportunity. But we thank you for the time tonight, and, and everybody's comments.
Okay, Chris.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that we close the public hearing?
Second.
I have a motion to close the public hearing in a second, anything on that? Seeing none, we'll put that to a vote, all those in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero, unanimous, thank you. Okay, now, we're gonna, the board take a vote for a recommendation to town meeting on the proposed zoning bylaw change? I'll entertain, and what's the motion, or what's the flavor of the board?
I wanna make a motion that we do approve it, to support this, this zoning bylaw. And the reason I wanna do is, we've lost enough properties as it is. These important historic sites, and I wanna give another option to preserve those.
Okay, I have a motion, is there a second?
I have a second on Mr. Sheehan's motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any more discussion by members of the board on the motion? Nothing, seeing none, then we'll put it to a vote, all those in favor of giving a favorable recommendation to town meeting, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Unanimous, four zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you all.
All right, we're only an hour behind. We started right on time, what are we doing up there?
Only problem, just lying, my wife knows what time will be done.
Are we on TV? Live tonight?
Live tonight.
Wow.
Yes, hello.
Didn't wanna get you nervous.
Can't realize, yeah. I feel like I've never been on live TV. Thank you all.
Thank you. All right, um, I thought we had some members of Sunset Avenue, okay. So this is, the next, what we have is, is just a discussion
Regarding.
Of the Sunset Avenue.
Brave people of Sunset Avenue.
Adequate access.
And the avalanche committee.
You sure?
Right here, eight o'clock, Sunset Avenue.
Well, daylight savings is, you know, almost a bit of a. All right, Paul, I'm gonna have you take the lead on this one, get us into this discussion.
As the board knows, you approved inadequate access plan for Mr. Mario Gomes at least three years ago. After Mr. Gomes failed to perform, to build the plan that the planning board approved, which is for a, a short street extension to the end of Sunset Ave, and terminate the road in a cul-de-sac, after several attempts of trying to get Mr. Gomes to, to follow the plan and finish it up, he didn't do that. So the planning board voted to recall the performance bond. So, the bond is in, in the town, under the control of the town. Then, Mr. John Glossa met with the board last spring, and he indicated that he was working for Mario, and that he could come in and see this project to its conclusion. And that has happened to some extent, but, um, we really haven't seen the construction completed adequately, and there are a number of outstanding issues with the construction.
Surprise.
The, the retaining, the block retaining wall that was constructed looks like it's in the right place, and generally the right location and shape, and is, is in good shape, and was constructed fairly well. The other slope treatments were completed. Drainage was installed at the toe of the slope above the wall, a flat planting area has been provided. Some plantings were, were installed, however, they weren't installed in some cases properly, and they were never watered by the, you know, the people that took over the project to complete it. There's areas where the trap rock has rolled down a hill and left some bare spots that need to be redressed. Some blueberry bushes were planted on the slope within the trap, trap rock that are not necessarily accessible to the homeowners to pick, pick, 'cause it's not, not a safe slope to be walking on. Some trees died, and in general, the, the project was not completed very well at all. And so, we've been in touch with the homeowners who have this slope on their property, and we've been trying to answer their questions and facilitate the, the completion of the project. However, at this point in time, it appears that what's in place now probably needs to, particularly with the landscape plantings, we need to wait to see what survives the winter, and then in the spring, hire someone to come in and replace the landscape plantings, relocate the blueberry bushes, dress up the slope, and finish the project properly, utilizing the performance bond money. So, the, the homeowners are here tonight, and they've requested a meeting with the board, and, and they believe they, they wanna talk to the board about this.
Actually, I was, it just so happened that Friday, I drove up there unbeknownst, and I, I stopped by the office after, and, and walked in onto Paul and Patrick. And I says, man, I was just up at Sunset, and, you know, the wall, retaining wall looks nice, you got plenty of room around the, the shed, and, 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 you know, it was a little spongy on top, and then I, I did notice some of the, the, you know, the blueberry bushes were dying, and some of them, and the, some of the riprap had, had slipped, and, and the gravel underneath it now is starting to, to wash. I mean, it's a pretty steep slope, I don't think you're gonna be picking any blueberries climbing that.
I, I think one of the concerns were, there was an email that said whether the slope was constructed properly, or whether it was a two-to-one slope. I believe the last correspondence from John Glosser was that he would have a survey company out there, but I don't even believe that was done.
It sure looks like a two-to-one, pretty steep.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure if it was done, you know, correctly, or whether it should be flagged or whatever. I don't know if you remember the timing, the timing was supposed to, the, the contract was supposed to have been.
I'd say we give it to John Glosser.
It should have been completed in June, we are now in October, or getting to the October. It, it's just been a long process, that's all. He, he has a whole list of things that was not completed.
Well, just a couple, small. The wall is, is nice, there's just kind of small places that need some work, but the slopes, is a two, two-to-one slope steeper or less steep than forty-five degrees?
Steeper.
Steeper, oh.
Much.
Then, then I.
Goes every two feet and going up a foot.
And, so, one of the other big things was the entrance way that they constructed to get onto the property. They, they just sort of left it as a ground ramp there rather than cleaning it up.
This is on your property, no?
Yes.
Okay.
Rather than cleaning it up and, and, you know, putting it back the way it was, which is really all I'm looking for. And, and, you know, the obvious things that have already been mentioned.
I don't know how we correct the riprap, if they have to, I mean, in the, in the spring, I mean, or put more down, or, maybe put some at the bottom? Put some, I'm talking about the bottom of the slope now, where the rock meets the, the le, the level part. Putting some railroad ties at the bottom or something, I don't think, to, to barrier it up, I don't know.
Some slope granite. He's got the money in the project. I think we bring Mr. Glosser back in, he's the engineer.
Yeah, yeah, I think we asked John.
And I think we do this now rather than in the spring.
Yeah.
And I, I would ask the neighbors here to put in writing everything that you have an issue with, everything. And we have that well before the meeting, that we get Glosser in here. And at that point in time, we address it item by item. When are you gonna fix it, John? 'Cause it, it's all going to be fixed on his nickel, okay? We've been dragging this thing on a lot longer than your involvement, you know? But it was, it's, it's unnecessary that it goes on this long.
I agree that we asked John, you know, and, and I think, uh, Mr. Poro makes a good, you know, you know, put a deep, I mean, will some of it be picky un and not, you know, whatever, but whatever you feel is, and, you know, we have the, we as the town have the ability to, to have our engineering department look at it as well, you know, and, and give us some input on, on what actions need to be taken. I don't know, have you been out there, Joe, to see this thing, or Rob, have you seen this thing?
I did the other day.
It, it needs some work, I mean, it's okay, it's getting there, but it, it definitely needs some.
It's not right.
It needs to be tweaked.
I was just wondering the last time that John Glosser was in, you know, in contact with either you or, um, I, I know that this was supposed to be finished up, we thought sometime in May or June, at least by June, and I, I just was curious as to the last time you may have had contact with him, Paul?
He, um, he came by the office a couple of weeks ago, and I mentioned to him that there are still outstanding problems, and, and that he should, as a project engineer, go out and verify if everything's been done according to the plan.
You haven't heard from him?
Didn't hear back from him. This did not go well, it didn't go as I had envisioned, and Mr. Gomes himself came back onto the job site and started working where we all thought he had ended his, his relationship on this project. And we were surprised to see him show up and start, start working, and that's part of the reason why we are where we are today, where there's still outstanding problems.
Well, I think that my own, my suggestion would be, I agree with Al, let's call John, let's get him in here. Let's get, let's get a punch list here, and, you know, I have no problem, and I don't think any member of this board has any problem spending Mr. Gomes' money to get this corrected if we have to, and, and let's get it done.
We do wanna get it done as soon as possible, we're not meeting for almost about four weeks, so I, I wonder if it's best to have at least Paul contact in, in between.
Yeah, maybe go out and do a site visit.
Maybe you could.
Yeah, get John. I think, I think, I think, Joe, that's a good point. You know, if you guys could get, you know, leave a message to John, have him come in your office or whatever, and say, look at, you know, this, you know, the board. We're, we're, you know, you, you know what to tell him, if you gotta do a site visit or whatever, if we gotta get the engineering department to go out there with you and look at it, and, and.
Yeah, since we're not, because of town meeting, we're not meeting for four weeks.
I mean, you're not gonna plant anything on the, on that leg, on, above that wall, it's gravel. And I mean, I, and to be honest with you, Friday, I was standing on the top looking down, I didn't go any property, I was up on top, and I'm walking on what would have been the, the, above the, what would be sidewalk by the wooden fence, and, you know, the ground is spongy, I think I mentioned that to you when I talked to you Friday, you know, it's like, it's like, it's almost like, you know, this thing should have been packed, and, you know. That's why I said this was just done, because that's what you, usually you get when a. a project is, you know, if the ground hasn't settled yet and packed down. And so that, so we understand, we're gonna try to help you as best we can, we're gonna get, I understand, I apologize for whoever, is it fault here? I'll take, I'll take the blame for this or whatever you want, but we'll get Mr. Glosser back in here, we'll get a punch list from you people that what you think is wrong and we are holding some money that was put in escrow for these type of things and there's, I think there's probably more than enough in there to correct what needs to be corrected.
And that, that money is being held by the Town of Norwood Treasure.
We have a little, I'm not gonna tell you where it is, but it's a little shoebox upstairs of Tony.
Bottom right hand drawer.
I can't tell you how many times over the years that was actually the case. In several towns that I work in, under the town clerk's desk, there was a shoebox.
It's around here somewhere.
Yeah.
Well, to move this along too, should we let John Glosser and Mr. Gomes know that when we meet the next time, we want to know that this thing is on track or done?
Let's go through, right through John Glosser. I don't want to get Michael involved.
But, all right, well then let him know. I mean, our option would be to pull the bond and finish, right?
Yep.
The bond's been pulled, we have the money. We can put the work out to bid or have the DPW contract to have, someone come in and just finish it.
Mike Ryan can get some of it.
Yeah, the pulling of the bond is already done. That we're beyond that step now. We've got the money. All right, so-
So we want to have him in by then, but you want to talk to him before?
We want to get John involved as soon as possible, even though we don't meet till after town meeting, you know, we gotta get John to have contact with the planning department and, and these nice folks.
Anything else?
You're not getting a blueberry pie until next year.
Good luck climbing that slope to get those blueberries. And those are those little blueberries, you know how many of those little blueberries you gotta have to make a pie?
No, that's the deal. Blueberries, we're gonna plant a little bit.
Yeah, you'll be making muffins and bringing them to the board.
No, we're gonna make the first pie for the guys.
The birds will, the birds will-
It's gonna happen next year.
And there's also some, I looked at some dead, and not, irregardless of your property, up on top, there's a tree, a pear, one of those pear trees that they plant on the street, flowering pear that is pretty much dead and there's one of the-
That was supposed to be-
Arbre Vitae that were blocked, one of those is dying, is almost dead now. So there are a couple of issues outside of yours, but obviously, you know, this has been a long battle and-
Are all the units sold, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know.
The last unit was bought, sold.
They have the, I know that those people have their own issues.
Right, but the last unit has been sold.
Oh, yeah, thank you.
So all I can, all I can say is folks that, I know it's frustrating on your part, but we'll get there.
So our next twenty-one meeting is October twenty-first and so we'll schedule it for that evening and we'll get in touch and let you know what time and everything that comes up between now and then, I'll be in touch.
Okay, so should we just send the orders to you or to the board?
Send it to Paul, to Paul at the planning office and hopefully we'll have some kind of answer. I mean, we're not gonna drag you down here and make you sit through zoning change bylaws for six hours.
I'd like to sit here and see what he has to say though. I would like to hear what he has to say.
Oh, no, no, if he comes, but if he's not gonna be here or something, we're not gonna make you come down for, you know, just to listen to what's, you know, talk about zoning changes.
I've been giving a very high-
I'll hold you to it. All right.
Okay, thank you.
I thought the bottom wall, I think now the shed though, you can get around the shed and everything, you've got plenty of room, you could park a car back there.
I really don't have any problem at all.
But to be honest with you, I prefer main blueberries. Local blueberries will be fine.
I'll work on that.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so the only thing up to do is Paul, your agenda. Updates and other business. We talked about the associate member, we're gonna hold off on that.
Before you, before you get to his agenda, can I say something?
Sure.
I just want to say, Mr. Halke Otis, that I found this a very interesting meeting the other night-
Yeah, that was pretty good.
Regarding the roles and responsibility of planning boards and zoning boards of appeal. The presenter did a great job. He was able to answer any questions that came out from the audience and I thought it was very well attended as well. Thank you.
This is something that Tony Mazuko wanted us to do, to offer some training sessions for the planning board, the Board of Appeals, and this is the first of two. There'll be another one, I think it's November third and that's gonna focus, November sixth, and that's gonna focus on special permits and variances. And, you know, the planning board's involved with special permits as well as the Board of Appeals. The turnout was great, we had all the planning board members there and we have most of the Board of Appeals members attend and I thought it was a good training session. I, you know, it was a refresher for some of us, even for board members that have been on for a long time like you. You probably were reminded or refreshed your memory or heard something new that you hadn't heard before.
Yep.
And so I think we all benefited from it. So stay tuned for the next session and if this is something that the board likes, we can, we can do this every year. We did open it up to other communities, it was nice to see some people from our neighboring towns come in and take in the session.
Great. Okay, any new business or updates?
The only update I have is Pat and I conducted a final inspection over at Regal Lofts on Friday. We inspected the grounds because the planning board did approve the site plan for anything on the ground outside the building and we found the site to be constructed according to the plans approved by the planning board. We were pleasantly surprised by the quality and the number of landscape plantings that were installed and the owner indicated that they spent a substantial amount of money, more than what was actually shown on the plan. And they were all, plantings were in good shape, including adding, you know, these tree bags that you fill with water and they slowly perk water to water the tree over the course of a few days. And so the fact that they spent additional money to make sure that the trees are watered well enough to survive was important. We did also get a tour of the units themselves and again, I was pleasantly surprised, I was-
With the quality?
With the quality of the construction and the size of the one bedrooms and studios, the size of apartments that we lived in when we were in college years ago.
And there were four of you.
And I think that, that'll probably resell pretty quick being so close to the train station for young professionals, people that want to commute back and forth to Boston.
Yeah, I thought it came out, the outside looks beautiful.
It does.
Really by, they did a nice job.
The windows really stand out.
Yeah, they really did. I thought they did a nice job on the exterior.
So based on that, we communicated to the building inspector that, you know, as far as the site plan goes, that we see the project as complete and that we had no objections to him issuing a final certificate of occupancy to close the books on a pretty controversial project that, that my first month on the job, it started with our hearings. So we're pleased with the outcome.
Are we holding any performance bond or anything for that project?
No.
So we don't owe them any money or anything like that?
No.
Good. Yeah, that was a nice project, that really came out nice.
It came out a lot better, the outside, the park, even the park-
Parking lots look good.
The new stripes and everything looks really good.
It really looks nice.
And actually to the contrary about the performance bond, so we did get a zoning incentive check from the state-
Oh, because it's a forty hour?
When it was approved as a forty hour and we have, we're holding seventy-five thousand dollars. But the good news is, and I off the top of my head, I can't tell you the amount, but once those certificate of occupancy are, is issued, we will be able to send a letter to the state and we'll get another check and I think it'll be substantial.
We have a member of the board of selectmen that'll own that money.
Oh, it's gone.
We're gonna spend that money.
It's already spent.
So, so I think that'll, that'll also-
That's great.
We'll put that money to good use.
That was a nice project, that came out nice. Are you ready to make any announcement on the RFPs for the-
Yeah, so Patrick and I, we issued a request for quotations for the Route One corridor study and we received two proposals in response, one from Herriman, which is a multi-disciplined engineering, urban planning firm, and they are currently doing work for us over in Vanderbilt Park as part of the branding project with New Signage. They submitted a proposal and Brovitz Community Planning also submitted a proposal and ironically, the two were the exact same price, forty-eight thousand.
How's that work?
Which I scratched my head how, you know, that could all come out the same. Both firms, I think, were pretty well qualified and we ended up leaning towards going back to work with Ted Brovitz again and so we made that recommendation and I think the general manager will be awarding a contract fairly soon. They will, he will be able to work with us on this project with the goal of an article for the 2020 annual town meeting that will both change the zoning map and change the zoning bylaw. So this project will involve some community meetings and stakeholder meetings and we'll engage with, with town residents and the business owners along Route One and then we'll put together some zoning amendments that will hopefully be, you know, fairly big amendments of structural nature on the spine of the town where we generate most of our real estate tax revenue. And so part of what we'll be looking at are strategic changes to allow additional uses to uniform the zoning, which is now four separate zoning districts in a four-mile corridor as one zoning district. Take a look at what uses are allowed, see if there are other new or different uses that we'd like to allow in the future and get some feedback from the residents on that and package it all up for a town meeting, warrant articles.
I just want to, and I know you know it and I know you know it and, and I'll be glad to help out on any way we can, but on the moratorium, which is gonna end in July of 2020, I know we're focusing on Route One, which is a major, we need a whole new setup down there, I think everybody agrees on that, but there are pockets around town where car open lot storage is allowed that we want to, you know, we want to look at the whole town as far as, you know, do we want to allow it? I mean, I just, I just think what happened up at Everett Street, no Everett Street.
Oh, Everett, yeah.
You know, it got out of hand up there and it, I understand lawyers, you know, get a lot of money to argue these cases about, you know, but, you know, that's a perfect example of, you know, it's off of Route One, but an area that we would have looked at. So we gotta look at the other pockets too, if we're gonna allow, you know, in these other districts, you know.
Whether to continue to allow-
Yes, to continue to allow.
-in the manufacturing district or whether we want to end that and just allow it on the Route One corridor and we focus all those auto-
Grandfather in what's there.
Yeah.
You know, eat the, eat the poison pill of what's there and not allow any more outside of the new zone or whatever. So these are things that we have to think about going, going down the road.
Yep.
What else you got?
That's all I have for tonight.
Anything else, any other questions? Anything come up on, I mean, the Wendy's, the fence, that's all, they've added the new fence, added new landscaping?
So that project's not completed yet. The, there's been ongoing problems with the stormwater detention basin-
I know conservation is involved in that.
-performing the way it was designed to, that after a rain event, within three days after, it's supposed to drain completely down, dry. The owner has made two attempts to fix that and has been unsuccessful. The engineering involved was less than perfect, some things like test boring holes might have helped inform the design of the stormwater detention basin.
Who was the engineer on that?
Borer Engineering. And so they have tried another fix and it's in place and we have some rain scheduled to roll through the region tonight and I was in a meeting with the owners' representatives today and they said, you know, "Let's look at it and see what happens over the next few days."
You need a good rainstorm.
The connection between the detention basin, the wall, the fence and landscaping is they've left open the last section of fence so that they could access that detention basin. Once they, they think that they've fixed the problem with the detention basin, it's operating properly, they'll put that last section of fence up and they'll extend that last section of landscaping in front of the fence and then hopefully we can call it a day on that project.
See, I would just run it right into the brook and not be there. That's what I would do.
That's one opinion.
I'm only kidding, but Conservation Commission will get mad at me.
She's probably watching, you know, another hot deck.
I know. Anything else?
We're getting ready for town meeting. In addition to the two articles that we talked about tonight, we have the proposed TIF agreement with Moderna Therapeutics and I've been involved with that and coordinating that with Moderna's representatives and the selectmen and there'll be a public information session on Thursday evening at the Civic Center on the second floor in the Wilt Room where we've invited town meeting members to come in and get a little presentation from Moderna, answer questions about the tax increment financing agreement in an effort to help to educate people and answer questions prior to getting to town meeting. So again, that is Thursday night, the 26th, in the Wilt Room, second floor of the Civic Center at seven PM. We are also spending a lot of time focusing on purchasing land, the land that we were calling the Saint Street property in South Norwood and Pat and I have been working with the Community Preservation Committee on a CPA application to fund the purchase of the property and so that's all moving forward fairly well. It will be the subject of a public hearing on Wednesday, the 25th, this Wednesday coming up at, again, in the same place, in the Wilt Room at the Civic Center. Folks are interested in learning about that and what the Community Preservation Committee is working on and welcome to attend that meeting as well and we're hoping that the residents and town meeting members will support purchasing that land for open space preservation, for a waterfront building, eventually a waterfront park trail running along the river, our own little river walk on Norwood. So we're going in that direction.
Great. So just for recapping town meeting, the only thing that we're presenting is the mixed-use overlay district expansion.
Yes.
The historic homes amendment will be presented by the applicant. We're not gonna have any, we have our recommendation and that's it. It's out of our hands at that point. They'll do their presentation and they'll fight their battle.
And I'm, I'll probably be going to bed for the land purchase article, working with the Community Preservation.
Yeah, you'll have other duties, obviously. Anything else, guys, with a motion adjourned?
Wow, so moved this early? Where's Mrs. Homwood?
Let's call her. They're on the line.
We could have Skater, what do they call that?
Yeah, Skater.
Skater.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we close this evening's meeting.
Second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Out.